This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February meeting. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's first selectman, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bewemy. Thank you very much for joining us, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move to item number three, approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen Meeting from January 7, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes for the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop of January 11, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I put together a brief presentation. I direct North Haven TV and your attention to the TV screens here at Town Hall. And I wanted to talk to each and every one of you about a very important topic and a very important subject. And that is a COVID vaccine update. Let me start by saying over the past three weeks, maybe longer, that Valerie and Tammy in my office have done an outstanding job helping hundreds and hundreds of people. Calls we've been getting, senior citizens who either needed information, Sally and Bill, who either needed to be directed towards a website where they could fill out and become registered on VAMS, which is an acronym for the Vaccine Administration System. Or, in many cases, Valerie and Tammy were actually talking to the children, the baby boomer children of some of these seniors who had no Internet access. They couldn't get through on the dial-in number. And we've helped countless number of people become registered for a vaccine. And I'd like to thank Valerie and Tammy for doing that. And the way we work in my office is I'm on one of the statewide vaccine committees, so many times I share real-time information with Valerie and Tammy. And they have a great ability to digest that information and then translate it into helping the people that call us. I wanted to share some information with our residents tonight, and we'll go back to the screens, ladies and gentlemen. So this is kind of an overview as to where we are as a state. Connecticut is being allocated approximately 58,375 vaccines per week. That's the first dose. Now, that is good news because we were averaging about 50,000 a week. It fell to about 46,000 a week. And now, as of this week, we're up to 58,375. Keep in mind that there's a little bit over 3,700,000 people in terms of the population of our great state here in Connecticut. When we look at the number of people who've received their first dose, that's 358,019 people. So that's really less than 10% of the overall population in Connecticut. 101,238 have been fully vaccinated, dose one and dose two. And in the beginning, our first responders across the state were eligible for Phase 1A. I'm happy to report here in North Haven that all of our first responders, police and fire, all of our firefighters and all of our policemen have been vaccinated. So our first responders were part of the first wave. We're hearing a lot of good things about the state of Connecticut, number six in the country in terms of what's happening in administering these vaccines. And that's all good news. We still have a ways to go, though, in terms of increasing the percentage of people in our state to be vaccinated. And I'll show you some townwide information shortly. The key is, the key thing to watch is the allocation to Connecticut every week. Going from 46 to 50, or then back to 46, wasn't a good thing. But now back up to the number I just showed you, the larger that number grows, the more people can become vaccinated. So let's take a look at Phase 1B, which we are in right now. The scheduling continues for those individuals 75 and older. There will be, in the next phase, scheduling for individuals between the ages of 65 and 74. Now, the scheduling information will be coming soon from the state and the governor's office. And that'll include frontline essential workers also, different than police and fire. What we're thinking could happen, it could be sanitation workers in this next phase. In the next phase, it could include supermarket workers. Teachers were trying to get up into this next phase. So, but the scheduling continues for us here in town on Phase 1B. These phases sort of overlap to a certain extent, but individuals with underlying medical conditions with increased risk for severe illness, they're prioritized. We call them, at a state level, in my committee, comorbidity, those that have multiple types of illnesses that require specialized treatment and medication. Congregate settings also will be phased in throughout Phase 1B. So when we look at Phase 1B, ladies and gentlemen, that's 1.4 million people in the state of Connecticut. Here's some options on how to access the vaccine. There's an online registration system through VAMS. I mentioned that earlier, the Vaccine Administrative Management System. If you don't have Internet, there's a VAMS number. And you see it here, 877-918-2224. There's an option of going through my chart through the Yale New Haven Health System. The number here, 833-275-9644. There's an option of going through the Walgreens Pharmacy Portal. Now Walgreens has select locations, but they require people to register through the VAMS site. There will be an announcement soon, I'm going to share with you shortly, about a CVS Pharmacy Portal. There's select locations. I'm going to identify those locations shortly. And I'm happy to announce that North Haven will begin administering these vaccines by appointment on or about North Haven, February 11. Not so much North Haven as a town, it's the CVS in North Haven. That is the reported start date, February 11. The local health departments throughout the state, including here in North Haven, we're working through our senior citizens in town also. Now, please keep this in mind. This can appear to be very complicated. If anybody has any questions in Phase 1B, or even when we get to Phase 1C, please call my office. We will help you, Valerie, Tammy and myself. We will give you information that perhaps you don't have and help you get registered. And in many cases, we may be able to walk you through the system itself. And we'd be more than happy to talk to any seniors who have baby boomer children that you'd like us to contact so they could help their parents.
Excuse me, Mike, that's a real good chart. Is that something that would be, that you could put up on the town website, maybe?
Val, I think that we certainly can do that.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so.
Maybe you'd update it once, you know, once CVS, or once Walgreens has a location and, you know, like announces. I know they're pending doing that, but that's actually a pretty... I mean, a lot of this information is on the state side. But, you know, people went to our website. It might be, I mean, that's a very nice concise chart in terms of, you know, where you can go with the phone numbers.
All right, so we'll make a note of that, we'll do that. Now let's get back to CVS for a second, okay? I mentioned that the appointments will begin to be available during the week of February 9. I've identified February 11. That's the target date that we're being told. I'm very grateful that with all the CVS stores across the state of Connecticut, it's these locations that will start. Avon, Bristol, Coventry, Glastonbury, Guilford, Hamden, Middletown, North Haven and Uncasville. So we are part of, you see here, only nine stores that CVS is going to start this program with. Nine stores in North Haven will be one of them. And I think that's good news for our residents. Now, when we look at CVS as a form of distribution of vaccines, we must keep in mind that there are going to be allocations also for CVS. They're going to be getting 6,800 doses in total allocated to their whole system. We're not sure how that's going to break out yet by store. But nonetheless, it's another vehicle for us to offer vaccinations as a state and as a municipality. This is the CVS Customer Care Number that you could call. You can also register at CVS.com. And if you have any problems or questions, you can't get through to the number, you're not sure how to register, please call Valerie and Tammy in my office. Call my office and ask for Valerie or Tammy. In terms of the second dose, let's look at the suppliers, Pfizer. I thought I'd share this with you because there are some questions. We're getting a lot of calls in terms of what about the second dose for those that have already received their first dose. So with the Pfizer vaccine, for every first dose that the state receives, the corresponding second dose gets shipped to the state three weeks later. That's a 21-day period. And your healthcare providers, for those that either have gotten the first dose or about to get the first dose, stay in contact with the healthcare providers whom you have to see and track this 21-day period for the Pfizer vaccine. Now with Moderna, for every first dose that the state receives, the corresponding second dose is received by the state four weeks later, which is 28 days. So whether, so if we look at Pfizer and Moderna, there's a 21-day to 28-day period after you receive the first dose that the state will receive the second dose that then gets distributed through the supply chain. Now let's take a look at North Haven. Right now in North Haven, ladies and gentlemen, 3,315 people, our residents, have been vaccinated. That's 14% of our population. Although it appears low, keep in mind there's an allocation process. So everyone has an allocation. We're actually higher than our surrounding towns in terms of percentage of our population vaccinated. Some of our surrounding towns range from like 6% to 13%. And we're at 14%. Wallingford's right behind us at about 13.8%. In North Haven, there are approximately 2,476 people aged 75 and over. So right now, 48% of our 75 and over population have received vaccinations in the first dose, at least the first dose. That is pretty good in terms of percentages. I think Roxbury, which is a very small town, has about 90% of this population vaccinated. We're doing okay here, and there's room for improvement. For North Haven seniors over the age of 75 that have not been vaccinated and need assistance, well, as I said, please call Valerie or Tammy in my office. Ask for my office and ask for Tammy and Valerie, and I'll certainly help you also. Now, before I conclude this portion, I'm going to give Valerie about two or three minutes. And Val, if you'd like to say anything else that maybe I missed in terms of what we're doing here.
No, I think that was pretty comprehensive, Mike. You covered most of it. But we have dealt with many of the residents, and there's been many different concerns. The biggest one is the fear of those who have gotten the first shot, the fear of not being able to get their second shot. And that, what they need to understand is where you get your first shot is where you go to get your second shot. There are a lot of people that have been skipping around. And because the particular entity, location where you receive your shot, if it's in Shelton at the Griffin Hospital Center, then that is where you should go for your second shot because that second shot has already been allocated for you as the patient. And the same thing for if you go to Yale, if you go to Divine Street, then that's where your second shot will be. It's already located in the queue for you, so to speak. Many places are giving you preappointments for your second dose. If they haven't and you have to go through the VAMS system, you should, once again, go back to the place where you originally got your first shot. So I think that's important.
Very good. And one final point, Bill, Sally and ladies and gentlemen. And today was a very good example. One of the advantages of being on the statewide vaccine committee is about an hour and 15 minutes ago, before this meeting started, the, my vaccine committee sent me, we all got updated from the state. And the new news, which was good news, was that the state allocation had jumped to that 56,000 that I talked about. So we're able to get real-time information here that we can share with Valerie and Tammy. They can help our residents every day. And also, tonight's a good example of you're getting information that right now most people don't know in terms of the state's allocation being bumped up to 56,000 plus.
And I'd also like to say that Judy Ammarone, our senior center director, has been very helpful. She's been working in conjunction with our office. It's been really, we've been tag teaming together, and she's been instrumental with our seniors. She's been preparing the paperwork for them, the packets, in advance of their appointments so that they could go there and pick it up. They drop off, they have it filled out in advance to make the process much easier for them, for our elderly folks. That's been a big help. So I have to give her a shout-out for all of her help that she's provided. And QVHD, our local health district, that we've been working very closely with these last several weeks, they have been great to work with. And they've really been a great asset here in town to our seniors. And we've been in very close contact with them, and it's been a good working relationship. So we've helped a lot of people.
I'm glad you mentioned Judy. That's a very good point, Val. We also should acknowledge our fire chief, Paul Gianioschewski, who's been outstanding, working with the health department, working with us in a collaborative fashion as our emergency management director in terms of being involved with the issues with us that he has been. So thank you, Paul, and thank you, Judy.
Val, my understanding is like, when you get your second shot, you get a certificate or?
I think you do get something that verifies that you've been vaccinated, yes. I haven't seen it firsthand, but I do understand.
That's what I've heard too.
Yeah, that you get a little card of some sort, yes.
Which may be, you know, again, useful at some point in time, you know, if, you know, as more people get vaccinated just as a way to keep track of who has been vaccinated.
Right, and I think in the future there will be people that, you know, may require to know that. I mean, they say that you don't, it's not mandatory. But I think in some cases, there will be maybe certain people who want to know before you're maybe employable or whatever, whether or not you've had that. So that would be proof of that.
You know, that's a great point, though, what they're just talking about, Sally. Because I have to give a shout-out to one of our residents, Mary Ann. I won't mention your last name, and I owe you a call. Because it was Mary Ann, early on, who found out I was on the statewide vaccine committee that came up with that suggestion, though, about would the state consider offering a card? And I said to Mary Ann, "I'm not sure, but I think it's a great idea." So on my vaccine committee on a Zoom meeting one night, I presented that as some feedback from some of our residents. And they all thought it was a good idea. So I certainly can't take credit for the idea because that was Mary Ann. But the fact that there's a designation, that you're going to have some sort of card or piece of plastic, whatever it may be, showing you've been vaccinated, I thought that was a great suggestion.
It is, I think it is very good.
So, we have another important announcement to make here, ladies and gentlemen. And this is our North Haven Citizen Alert Notification System. So Monday, during the blizzard, I was here at Town Hall. And I put out a notification system message, giving everyone an update, you know, where we were at that point in time on what was a pounding blizzard. And I wanted to review this again because Valerie and I were talking about how we have about 18,000 people signed up already.
Yes.
And yet, some people still didn't get my message because we still have the balance of our population that hasn't been signed up. So I just want to review this one more time. We have this new system. You opt in to enter your contact information. We're going to show you this, and you can call our office if you have any questions. And the information you provide, we wanted you to know, is protected and will not be used for any other purpose other than these emergency messages through our new system. When we issue a notification about a potential safety hazard or concern that we have, you will receive a message on your telephone, your landline, or your cellphone, or an email address that you've provided for us. So for those that have provided all three, you'll get three of the same messages. But that is designed, ladies and gentlemen. If you're at work and we left a message on the landline and you didn't get the message, so you came home at 6 o'clock, you may have missed the important part of the message that we're sending during the course of the day. So by providing as much information as you can, you can receive the updates in real-time fashion. Now, if you did not receive a message from me, and there were those that didn't, I actually was getting calls from people, "Mr. Frieda, how can we get on the system?" And I got calls that day, actually. If you didn't receive a message from me on Monday afternoon during the storm, you can certainly register your number online through our website. Or you can call my office, and Valerie and Tammy will assist you. Now, that's what the portal looks like. And Val, because you've been helping so many people on this, I'm going to turn these next two slides over to you.
Sure, Mike. That is our homepage for the website. And down in the lower right-hand corner, there's a little alert box for the Citizens Alert Registration. And that would be the first step. You would just click on that box, and it'll bring you to another page. You can, yes, okay. And then on that page, there's a little, a little click here link, which I've circled on the diagram. And you would just click that, and then it will bring you to the actual registration form page. And it will just ask you for some basic information. And it'll ask you if you would like to set up an account with a username and a password. And then you can put all your information in with your address, phone numbers, cell phones, whatever numbers you would like to be reached at, and even an email if you would like to do that as well. And that basically is it. It's a very simple process. But if you don't have the Internet or you're not comfortable going through that process, as Mike mentioned, just call our office. And it's very easy for me or Tammy to manually enter you into the system with as many numbers as you would like. And that's basically it.
And finally, I have a public service announcement that I know is going to resonate with Sally and Bill. Sally's father, of course, served in World War II in the United States Navy. Bill, of course, an officer at West Point in his military career. So I know times are tough. And I know it's difficult for everybody. It's difficult for us here professionally and even personally in our own lives. You know, we've been torn apart in terms of, with storms, tornadoes, with this pandemic. But we always try to stay very positively focused, to try to create positive outcomes. You've probably heard that from me many times. I can be relentless on trying to create positive outcomes. But recently, I wanted to share with everyone a story that I think is important to share. So we have a senior citizen couple in town, I'm not going to mention any names, who, the husband is, of course, a retired military officer who's had a great deal of health problems in the past couple of years. His wife has been caring for him very nicely. She unfortunately got hurt in an accident, and now they needed help in getting prescriptions. So the husband, who has many, many health issues, decided that he had no choice because there's no family locally. Some neighbors, I guess, were unable to help. So while his wife was home, he decided to go to a pharmacy on a very windy and icy day. They had no choice. So while he was getting out of his car, and I may not have the story totally accurate, but I think you'll get the conceptual aspect of it. As he was trying to get out of the car, stepping up on the curb, there was a wind, blast of wind, it was icy. And he saw some people nearby. And he asked for some assistance, just to help. He had a mask on, he had a face shield over the mask. And all he was looking for was a form of assistance so he wouldn't fall. Because a fall for a gentleman like that, with all the health issues he has, would be very serious, particularly falling in a parking lot. Now, for whatever the reason, that those that he beckoned kind of just went like this and walked by. Now, I'm going to surmise that maybe because it was COVID and people were trying to stay socially distanced, perhaps that was the reason. But they had masks on, he had a mask and a face shield on. So this public service announcement I wanted to make tonight is simply this. If you see someone who needs help, particularly a senior citizen, I'm sure the people didn't know that this gentleman had served in multiple military campaigns. But whether it's a veteran, whether it's a senior citizen, a man or a woman, if you see them and they're asking for some help, a simple helping hand, perhaps getting them off the curb or helping them step up on the curb would be very, very beneficial. And I hope everyone can understand that in these tough times, people really need help. And the more we can help people, I think, the better our society becomes. And Bill?
On the same day, same lines, you know, I think there may come a time for all of us when we may also need help, you know, in terms of, you know, aging or our own, you know, in terms of even helping, you know, helping a neighbor out in terms of the snowfall that we had or, you know, getting mail for somebody or picking up a prescription. I mean, you know, a variety of things. But, you know, helping somebody today, it could be you that somebody will help tomorrow, you know. And I think all of us have tried to do that on some occasions. And I think it's a worthy public service announcement to think about ways that, you know, and I think we've just offered Val and Tammy, you know, to help people in a couple of different ways. You know, they could be, they've probably been doing that all day, every day for quite some time now, trying to get people registered, you know. I mean, but it's actually a good use of, you know, their resources. But, you know, but on the other hand, you know, the reason somebody, sometimes people are calling, like you mentioned earlier, is that maybe they don't have family members that can help, or are local or whatever, that, you know, that are somewhere else. And they need that help, you know, because they have no one. But, I mean, we're all, I feel fortunate that I have plenty of family members. I know you do, or, you know, or friends, you know, or, you know, Sally, you know, in terms of Sally's situation with, you know, her family or friends. And I've got family and friends that I could call on that, but sometimes people have nobody, you know.
I said to the individual, Sally, I would have done it myself if I had known. I would have gone over there and helped him myself. I mean, there was a time about five years ago in a blizzard. I was in a public works truck, and I see the senior citizen. He's stuck, he's trying to get out, he's pushing the car. I said to our public works director, "Stop right here." I said, "I got to help this gentleman here." And we had a shovel in the truck. I got out, I shoveled, I said, "Sir, please stand aside." You know, he's maybe in his 70s. And I pushed the car out. And two and a half weeks later, I get a letter in the mail from a woman. It wasn't a North Haven resident. She had told me that her father had recently had like quadrupled bypass surgery. And she thanked me because she felt that I saved his life. Now, I don't know if that's the case. But, you know, I think the whole point of these stories are we've got to try to help people wherever, wherever we can, so.
Well, I think your public service announcement is a worthy announcement. You know, we always have this... You know, we, we always have this phrase, you know, random acts of kindness and, and I'm sure you both, like myself, we try to do that, whether it's helping an older person reach for something on a high shelf in the store or help them put their bags in the car, whatever. But that's, the story that you told, which happened recently during COVID, you know, there are people out there, I mean, I still see random acts of kindness that, you know, out at Stop and Shop or wherever, but there are people out there and perhaps the folks that were in the area of this gentleman were in this category of folks who are very afraid. And, and, you know, I, I had a client in my office today telling me about a friend of hers who just is beyond, you know, just over the top, won't go anywhere, won't do anything. There are people who are very afraid of COVID. So it, it, it does have an impact on the random acts of kindness and that's unfortunate because if, if there are reasonable precautions, he was outdoors, everybody had masks, he had the extra shield, you know, but there's, there are people who are very afraid and we encourage people to be cautious. So it's a fine line between encouraging people to be cautious and saying, go help this person. I mean, I've been in the store and backed up and my cart hit someone else's and they've like, ah, what are you doing near me? You know, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, you know, I didn't see you there. But they get, you know, and other people are much more relaxed about it. Everybody's wearing the mask and doing their best. But, yeah, you know, I agree, you know, in a different world without COVID, hopefully someone would have helped that guy. I'm not saying they shouldn't have because of COVID, but we have to understand that those particular folks there might have been in that category of folks who were very afraid. And that's unfortunate because, you know, he didn't get the help he needed. And that's too bad, you know? If I were there and he had a mask and I had a mask, I would have helped him, you know? Sometimes you just have to do what you feel is right. My father was in the Army, not the Navy. He said he was in the Navy. He was in the 20th Infantry and he won the Purple Heart and the Bronze Star, fighting on the front line in World War II with the United States Army. But I appreciate you mentioning him. His, the five-year anniversary of his death is next month and I'm sure you know that. And I appreciate you mentioning him. And I still get lots of comments about my dad and I appreciate that. But I think your public service announcement is very well spoken. Let's try to help each other. And, you know, I wrote a column about this a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago. You know, there is a lot of fear and you've talked about it too, Michael, hearing from people who are suffering from depression, from being isolated. There is a high level of fear amongst certain people, you know, and we all have to be cautious. But we've also seen many examples of random acts of kindness, like the gentleman was on NHTV who put together outside Town Hall, these packages of food for people. You know, there's, there's still more good out there than bad. I firmly believe that. My father used to say I was an optimist and even in these difficult, challenging times, I believe in optimism, you know? But I can't sit here and condemn those folks who didn't help them. I don't know their situation, do they have pre-conditions, you know? It's, it's tough, but, you know, we have to be reasonable and if you see someone who needs help and you think you could safely help, I would, like you, encourage you to do so. These are tough times.
Very tough.
But I think, I commend you for giving that very personal public service announcement. Sometimes we just have to step back from the situation and realize we're all humans trying to get through a very crazy time.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah. So thank you for bringing that announcement to the forefront.
And I think we'd all agree too, that we should, that even when times hopefully will no longer be tough, we still should continue to do as many acts of kindness as we can.
The random acts of kindness, very, very popular phrase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all drew their own reward.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay, so I'm going to turn the rest of the meeting over to Sally and Bill, okay? So, yes.
Oh, yeah, we, again, I think both, you know, I think we were both going to mention, you know, along the same lines in terms of, this is probably going to get a spot as any in terms of random acts of kindness. I want to, I think Sally would second this or may actually was planning on saying the same thing, but thanks to Public Works for getting us through another storm. I mean, it was, I don't know, I think I must have spent at least 10 hours out there trying to clear snow or shovel or whatever, so I don't know. You know, they had to work at least 24 hours plus to, to get our roads cleared and, you know, it was a, it was a bad storm. And thank you for, you know, everybody that, you know, that, in Public Works that, you know, kept our streets clear and all of a sudden on Tuesday morning, you woke up and the weather got a little bit better and all the work that they did, the streets were magically, the main roads at least were magically clear, so, you know, my thanks to, to all their hard work and what they did to keep everybody safe.
Yeah, I will second that, Bill. I did get your, your alert.
Oh, you did?
By phone and, and you mentioned how hard they were working and that they were going to take a little break for a couple of hours and, you know, I live on a very small street and my street was perfectly clear and I thought they did a phenomenal job. It was a big storm. Do you know what those total?
Yes, 16.3 inches.
All right, okay. Can you be more exact? Okay. Well, yeah, it was a significant storm and, you know, they did a great job. I've said it before, I'll say it again, Public Works are the infantry of our town government. They're in the trenches doing all this stuff every day, every week, month in, every month. So we appreciate the long hours, they're away from their families and, so I second Bill's sentiments regarding their hard work.
Okay. Would you like to take it over?
Yeah, well, number six correspondence, I don't know what that's about.
We have none.
Oh, well, being none, we'll go to seven.
Right.
Resignations and appointments. I'll do the first one, if that's okay, Bill?
Yes, please.
I will make a motion for the appointment of Thomas Borelli, 69 Warner Road, to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2024.
I'll second Mr. Borelli, Mr. Borelli's appointment.
Okay, in, in the discussion, I just wanted to point out that we've had a vacancy here. Bernie Pellegrino, longstanding North Haven resident, moved away to another town and hopefully he'll move back because I think that's the family's intention. But we had a vacancy here and Tom Borelli is a licensed plumber, does commercial, both and residential, and has a great deal of experience in installing main sewer lines, so I thought he'd be a perfect fit for the WPCA.
Yes, his resume was in our packet, which I reviewed, and it was quite impressive and extensive list of experiences that will serve him well in this position, so that's why I moved for the appointment.
Okay, so we've, we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Then the, I'll make a motion for the appointment of Ronald L. Bathrick Jr., 37, Susan Lane, to the Board of Education to fill the unexpired term of Wesley O'Brien, term to expire November 21st, 2021.
I'll second that appointment. I will say that Mr. Bathrick has big shoes to fill. Wesley O'Brien was one of my favorite members of the Board of Education and I was sad to see him leave. Very intelligent man who always offered great contributions to Board of Education discussions. So just refresh my memory, this, you know, he's, Mr. Bathrick would be finishing up
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien's terms. So we're talking about, you know, a nine-month period. So when it's that short of a time, it's, because sometimes you see on the ballot, you know, a special provision for the Board of Ed, but in this case, because the term is expiring in November, the charter is very clear that we, as the Board of Selectmen, can make this appointment.
Yes.
Because this is an elected position, so folks out there might be wondering, hey, why isn't there an election?
That's a good point.
Yeah.
So what will happen is Ron fills the unexpired term, as Sally is referencing, and then he asks if he decides to, and I believe he will, he'll have to run for election.
Right, in, in the early November.
Yes.
Regular municipal election. So we are filling it because, you know, you don't, you want to have your full board and it's, it's a relatively short time.
Yes. You know, I want to also say, I agree with you on Wes O'Brien, a consummate gentleman, a wonderful individual. We go back a long way. His late wife, Debbie Ward O'Brien, was just a remarkable member of this community. Wesley, thank you very much for your service. And as far as Ron's concerned, he has a great deal of experience in a lot of different areas. He spent a lot of time in managing project graduation, working with the high school, with Russ Dallie, our principal. He's known by the administration for his efforts in doing that very important project graduation, which we've done for many, many years here, so. We have a motion, we have a second?
Can I just add that there's a little typo, it's supposed to be November 30th, 2021?
Right.
Right, and it's Board of Education, not Board of, that's okay, that's just a typo. So it is November?
30th.
30th, okay, so.
amend the motion.
I will amend my motion. I believe you made the motion, so.
Yeah, maybe I'll, maybe, based on that, you know, maybe I'll reread the motion and make it, because I was just checking the calendar and the date was.
It was a typo, I apologize.
And I wasn't sure exactly what the re, the date for the inauguration.
Maybe you had 21 in your mind.
Yeah, 2021 and I had.
It was a Sunday, yeah. So, so, so based on that amendment, I'll reread the appointment of, and make a motion to appoint Ronald L. Bathrick Jr., 37, Susan Lane, to the Board of Education to fill the unexpired term of Wesley O'Brien, term to expire November 30th, 2021.
I'll second that. Is that a motion to amend the agenda or we could just make a motion to amend the appointment?
Procedurally, I prefer to see an amendment on the first motion, okay?
Okay.
So, so that, you're amending the motion that you previously made?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion and Sally's seconding the amendment.
Right.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sally?
Yes, number eight is our, on the agenda is the property tax refund, so I will happily make a motion to accept all of the property tax refunds listed on our agenda.
I'll second Sally's motion regarding the property tax refunds.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number nine, the next meeting of our Board of Selectmen, it will be Thursday, March 4th, in Conference Room 1, which is this conference room, ladies and gentlemen, here at Memorial Town Hall. Item number 10, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and we look forward to seeing you on March 4th. Thank you very much.
Enjoy the Super Bowl. Don't go to a big party. Right?
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.